All right, please stand before the pledge and turn your cell phones on.
Intents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose law we live, and in whose law we serve.
So, thank you, everyone. All that clapping next door is not for us. I'm not quite sure what's going on there, but we had a couple of things have to be rescheduled because of our snowstorm last week, so I appreciate your understanding in that. First on our agenda tonight, because I don't want the kids to have to stay up until really, really late, is Mrs. Olivia Doctor with her students who are going to do a presentation for us on A Long Walk to Water, right? Last year, there was a fundraiser for it. I'm gonna let the kids or Mrs. Doctor explain what that's all about, but I would just like to share their names, and then I would ask if, when you come up, if you pull the mic down so that people can actually hear you. I know you have some poems. And just say your name before you speak, so that people know, okay? All right, the floor is yours, guys.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Ann Doctor, and I teach 7th grade English here at the high school. And tonight, I'm just going to share with you some of the things we're learning in English VII. Also, the students are here to share some of the poems that they have written. So first off, we do reading comprehension practice. Fluency practice, to become more fluent readers. Test-taking skills and strategies to prepare for state assessments. Journal writing, which is more creative writing. Paragraph and essay writing, so more formal writing. And close reading of a text, breaking it apart, going back, looking for specific quotes to answer specific questions. Now, first quarter, we read A Long Walk to Water by Linda Sue Park, and I'm not gonna read the whole caption for you, just the things you need to know. There's two main characters, Selva and Nia. They take place during two different time periods, 1985 and 2009, but they're in the same country, southern Sudan. And we're gonna watch a quick video from Selva, and also, we have a container here who will be collecting funds for Water for Sudan.
This is the house I was born in. That's where I grew up. That's where I was born. I used to play here with my cousin. That's my uncle's house. My grandfather was buried here.
Sudan is Africa's largest country. For 21 years, a civil war raged between northern and southern Sudan. Nearly 2 million people died. 4 million were displaced. During fierce government attacks in 1985 amid gunfire and bomb blasts, 17,000 southern Sudanese boys fled into the bush. They became known as the Lost Boys of Sudan. The Lost Boys tracked 1,800 miles across the desert, fending off lions and hyenas, eventually living in refugee camps, first in Ethiopia, then Kenya. During their journey, about 5,000 of the boys perished from hunger, thirst, disease, exploding bombs, or attacks by animals and soldiers. The 12,000 who survived ended up in the UN-sponsored refugee camp in Palcomo, Kenya. In 1996, Salva Duf is one of the first of 3,800 Lost Boys selected for resettlement in the United States.
When I came here, I was once a Episcopal church. That's how I got here. And when I came here, I didn't know anything. And when I got out from my apartment, walking about five blocks, I couldn't remember to go back to my place again, because everything looked the same.
Salva is now an American citizen. He lives in Rochester, New York, and is working on his bachelor's degree in international business.
And I have to make sure that I work hard enough to support myself and educate myself as much as I can. And I'm sure maybe a lot of you read about what is going on in Sudan and what happened. During the wartime, my dad took me to school. And when he took me there, the war broke out, and then I departed, and we never see each other again. And I didn't know where my dad was for about 19 years. And when I heard about him, he was sick because of waterborne diseases, and he was in the clinic of UN. He walked close to 300 miles to go to that clinic, and he walked there many, many days to get there. I said I should go and see my dad before he passed away. And when I went there to that clinic, I saw my dad. He was very weak. And I walked to my dad. I said, "Hey, Dad, how are you?" And he said, "Who are you?" I said, "I'm Salva Duf." And he was starting with emotion. And he sprayed water on my body. He said, "It's a sign of the war coming back." He felt like I was dead and not coming out of the tomb. The doctor told him that. "He needs to start drinking clean water. If not, he might get sick again and get some waterborne diseases again. He might die." When I went back to UN, as I said, I should do something to help my dad and other people who are in the same situation as well. And that's where I formed a nonprofit organization called Water for Sudan. That's why I'm here today. And now, he's drinking clean water. He's healthy. I was studying it because of him, but I find there was so much need for others. And if you help them, these peoples out there, they may help others. And that's what really gave me energy, because it's helping the life of poor people.
So that's just a little snippet of the book, A Long Walk to Water. Selva was based on a real character, and Nia was a made-up character. So again, we will be collecting donations for Sudan. Now, the students faced a challenging assignment. They had to write two voice poems, which is not an easy thing to do, because you want to have two characters speaking separately and then together. They collected information both from the novel and from nonfiction pieces that we read in class, and then they took the important details and put it into their poem. They revised and edited the poem, and now tonight, six of them are here to share the poems with you.
Hi, I'm Brayden Sador, and this is my two-boys poem. The civil war is still going on. Getting water takes almost eight hours of time. Fleeing from my village was the hardest thing. Up here, my dear sister gets sick. Every day we walk for hours at a time. My best friend eaten by lions, and it's all my fault. I always get sore to my feet while getting water. It's a pain to get them out. My beloved uncle dies just for protecting us. The water in the well was a gift to us. I will always treasure it, and all of this just to survive.
Hi, my name is Samantha, and this is my two-boys poem. Life's a long, sad, and a bit too hard. War was well and had to walk eight miles for water to survive every day. Crossing a desert where lost his town, his uncle encouraged him to keep going. Conflict between Nwari and Dinkah tribes in southern Sudan. Moved to camps during jary season, ran away. Uncle and his friend Nwariel died. His uncle was shot by a group of men, and Nwariel was eaten by a lion. Neither of them had much water. Nia had to dig a hole for water, and she did not have to walk in the woods. They had to cross the Gila River, which had crocodiles in it, and people were shooting those to get the water. They both had to go for a long walk to set up. My sister had to heal back from pneumonia and began to live. Two refugee camps made better life. One two camps to take care of them. Building a wall in Nia's village for three. He went to America, got new clothes and family. They're both having a hard time for the family. Nia was getting into school. Selva found his old family in a construction, no well. And Nia talked to the person who was on the way for Selva, funded self-funded money for wells in southern Sudan. They're both building a school for southern Sudan, and Nia was constantly getting money.
Hi, my name is Alice Muir. This is my two-boys poem. Headed towards Ethiopia. No water. Walks eight hours each day. Uncle died. I tried to run more. Sister got sick. Crossed the Gila River. Both took a long trip, digging for a well. Went to Kenya Refugee Camp. Learned how to play volleyball. Finally gets a full school. Went to America. Met Adinka. Celebrated wealth from his village. Me and I grew this family through a celebration when they finally got a well.
Hi, my name is Elena James. I ran away from my village. There is no close, clean water. I walked eight hours to get water. My sister got sick from the dirty, contaminated water. My uncle got shot and died. There is war between our tribes. I worry about the war and my family getting killed. I lead a group of 1,500 Lost Boys to Ethiopia. We are responsible to hold our own weight. There is 1,000-mile war trip. We go to camps. There is not a lot of water at the lake camp, so we have to suck it out of mud. We cross the Gila River infested with crocodiles, and we go to many refugee camps. I am without family for a long time. I go to Rochester, New York. Adinka helps and aware and builds wells for them. My village gets clean water. We get a well, and other villagers come to get water, too. We hope to get a market, clinic, and we now have a school. Nia listened and heard. I am Selva.
Hello, my name is Haley Gabrielle. Eight 1,000 mile walk in Sudan, and with no water, it just kept getting hotter and hotter. I lost my family from a war in Sudan. My sister is getting sick from contaminated water. I take long walks because I was forced to leave my village. I am now part of the Lost Boys and then found my family. But what about the contaminated water? I survived through the man-eating lions in the Gila River. And now, we're building a school for education because of the well. Now, with the non-toxic water, Sudan is a better place.
Hello, I'm Evelyn Focifer, and this is my two-boys poem. Selva's uncle was murdered because he was leader of a group. Not Nia's uncle, what is, uncle was the leader of their group. Both of their uncles are leaders. Selva's uncle, Selva, ran away from home to get away from the war. Nia walked for eight hours to a pond for water and back. They both go through many struggles. Selva crossed a dry desert with very little water. Nia went through a pond that had very little water left. They both need a well. Selva got to go to America. Nia got a well with healthy drinking water. They are both happy.
So I just wanted to thank all my students, and I will salute them for you. And thank you for your attention tonight and your time.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Doctor, do you think we could get a picture of them with Mr. Burns, our president? That'd be great. Our photographer's right here. You guys did a great job.
All right, we're gonna try and group you guys together rather than one long line. Group together rather than one long line. Please, two or three from Neil. All right, do you need all the stuff? I want to get the flag with one more. I want that flag in there, okay, still. I'm begging on the floor.
Could I just ask one question? What is the fundraiser for?
Selva takes the money and digs wells for the Dinkah and Nwariel tribes all across southern Sudan.
Wow, okay, thank you so much. Yeah, I would leave it there. There's a lot of people in the hall tonight, okay? And before Mr. Campbell, before we do the rest of the board meeting, I would just like to say, this is Liz's, not mine. This is from the junior-senior high school as a Board of Ed recognition, which was in a couple of weeks ago. And if you recall, the board recognition came in between two different board meetings, and so the elementary, which the signs are still up, recognition of you is still on the wall, and this is from the junior-senior high school. And Liz, we're really glad you're here, too, so that's for you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there any requests to withdraw specific items from consensus items? Okay, having no requests, I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum, A through N.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, do we have any speakers?
Hi, my name is Cam Colick, and what I want to talk about is the sharing, but it's kind of frustrating. I don't know if any of you have picked up a child at the elementary at 3 o'clock in the parking lot. Can be a little bit of a nightmare. Before the Jersey Barrier went up, the stripes for the line closest to the road were this way. The ones behind it were this way. When the Jersey Barrier went up, the ones on this side changed in this direction, and now we have X's. No one knows which way to park. Last Wednesday, when I picked up my daughter, there were three cars like this, three cars like this, and one in the middle. Then somebody came and parked at the end, and we couldn't get around anymore. I don't know when resealing is scheduled to happen, or if there's anything that can be done, but there's a lot of frustration and I think a lot of people have, people don't know which way to park. If you could look into that.
Have you reached out to Mr. Graff or anyone before tonight?
No, I haven't had a chance to, but I know I have to pick up a child tomorrow. I picked somebody up today. And tomorrow night, there's a concert. It's the same type of thing when there's concerts at night, especially now with the snowplows at least tending to spaces. But it would be nice if the stripes were clear. I can act out about getting a can of spray paint, fixing it up a little bit, because it is kind of congested. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but I just wanted to mention.
I will pass it along. I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Haig. I just attended the veterans exemption over prior to this meeting. Guess I will come from a little different tact than a few of these meetings. Of course, I know it's not the law here. Our flag, in that of, in my opinion, a warrior, someone who will put their weight right on the line of this company. I went to the meeting, didn't feel that this was totally pertinent over there, because we're talking about numbers. We're talking about, who guess what, something we were pitting one person against another. And as a full-time white, on-need resident, I don't like that. My name is Gary Haig. I grew up in East Eden on Hagg Road. I went to the leading school district system. My two daughters attended also. Now I have grandchildren in this school system. I'm very proud of this family. 1965, I would have been drafted. I chose to join the Marine Corps. Did a two-year term, one tour in Vietnam. My upbringing taught me that military duty in this country was at times necessary and expected. This was the case for a considerable number of even residents. And I approved it at the prior meeting. Two of those even residents answered the call, and while their spirits are with us tonight, they gave their lives to protect our freedoms. Sergeant John Brian Thompson, who grew up on Shins Road in East Eden, found himself in Southeast Asia April the 20th, 1968. Sergeant Thompson was an intern, interned with the United States Army, 1st Division. On the aforementioned date, Sergeant Thompson was cordially wounded and lost his life at age of 20. Classmate of mine, graduating class of 1963, David Harold Finger, class of, if I said '63, in a similar manner, found himself in the A Shaw Valley Republic of Vietnam. Corporal Finger joined the Army's 101st Division, the same unit that his dad served with in World War II. Corporal Finger was involved in combat operations on August 6, 1969. As a company, was taken under enemy fire as Corporal Finger. Served as a lead position. Corporal Finger was mortally wounded at the age of 23 years old. The seniors, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Finger, both served in World War II. As even residents, it is important for us to recognize the sacrifices of those who have gone before us. History has taught us, to this day, the brutal effects of war can. We can hope and pray that somehow modern-day leaders can resolve issues that we as citizens cannot. Unfortunately, until then, we are bound to confront the loss of our loved ones. Let's never forget their sacrifices. I'm hopeful that veterans and townspeople can come together in some way to pay tribute to our local pay bills. Veterans, we need to thank the board, the residents of the city, for any and all considerations. Thank you very much.
Any other speakers? All right, new business. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Holly Gable be accepted effective November 6, 2014. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Gable for her service to the district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, appointments. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kelly Ray, who is certified as a registered professional nurse, be appointed on probation as a school nurse effective December 1, 2014 through May 31, 2015. Salary is based upon CECEA contract, Level 12, Step 1.
Second.
Discussion.
The thing I'd like to say is Kelly started yesterday. She is an experienced nurse. We're so grateful and thrilled to have her here. She was supposed to start on 12-1 regardless of the storm, so she came in and had a great day and was introduced to lots of people. We're excited to have her here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mrs. Rita Stur, head inspector, Mrs. Barbara Caffrey, Mrs. Bonnie Cordell, Mrs. Karen Cornell, and Mrs. Marion Phelan be appointed as inspectors for the non-binding referendum veterans tax exemption vote on December 9, 2014 at a rate of $13.40 per hour, and further authorize the district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions, which may occur prior to December 9, 2014, with individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector Personnel List.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. It's $13.40 an hour. Is that the rate that if you're working a general election?
Barb, can you answer me?
Is?
I have no idea. That's what we've paid them for.
Where did $13.40 come from?
That's what we've paid them for, as I've been doing this.
Because $13.40 is actually, because I did the calculations, $13.40 an hour is if, well, you make $165 a day if you're working a general election, but you're there from 5:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. So that's an extra five hours, four hours, that they're making $165. So you're actually getting paid more for this referendum.
Well, it's, what, 12-hour shift, 9 to 9? So if you take a look at $13.40 times 12 hours, it's $160.
They must come in before 9:00.
Yeah.
I don't know what they get paid for.
You get paid less than for a general election, because it's $165.
For a general election.
For a general election.
It's pretty close that they come in at 8:30. They might end up getting about the...
They might go 8:30 to 9:30.
We're at $160 here. It'll probably cost, because we're at 161 right now.
Is this the rate we've always used? That's a good question, Patty. Is there something you would like us to do with that?
No, no, no. I was just, because I've worked the elections, and it's a lot longer time, and they're getting less hours for the same money. You know, fair.
I get it.
Barb Caffrey called me today, and she cannot make it. She is a player. She doesn't take, so we can stretch her.
Well, it doesn't really matter, because she can fill it anyways.
Maybe make a motion on it. I don't know.
I think we're okay, because it talks about further authorization to fill any vacancies.
Okay. You okay with that, Barb? Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, physical education teacher Amy Francisco's hours be increased by .15 to 1 effective November 3, 2014.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective November 20, 2014, the change in hours for Transportation Department personnel be approved as follows. Patty Boge increased by .5 to 4.75 hours. Robert Barton decreased by .75 to 4 hours. Sue Pratt decreased by 1 to 5.25 hours. Leo Granger decreased by .75 to 3.5 hours. Dawn Pricehill increased by .25 to 3.75 hours. Mary... Tereshevitz, thank you, increased by .25 to 7 hours. Debbie Barton decreased by 1.5 to 4 hours. Diane Zimmer decreased by .25 to 3.5 hours. Judy Gustis Stowe decreased by .5 to 3 hours.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to let everyone know why this is on here, not very uncommon when we see adjustments during the year, but it's due to changes in special ed, psych changes, in student programming needs, and it just prompted another bump bid process, so that's why you're seeing it on here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of beads for use in the junior-senior high school art class valued at $436.50 be accepted from Bead Gallery.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of Daktronics multi-sport portable scoreboard with an upgraded pneumatic tire wheel kit valued at $4,000 and $4,050 be accepted from the Eden All Sports Booster Club.
Second.
Discussion?
I see Marissa here. I'm not sure if there's anybody else here from the Boosters, and I know that Marissa sits on the Booster Club often. This is a wonderful donation.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of $100 from Robert Bolton for the GLP playground build be accepted.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Model UN Overnight Field Trip to Chicago to participate in the Chicago International Model UN Conference from December 11th through December 14th, 2014 be approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the girls varsity bowling team and the boys varsity bowling team be consolidated into one team for the 2014-15 season.
Second.
With the position recognized at a Level 2 coaching position for 2014-2015.
Second.
Discussion?
Why did this happen?
This was a budget cut in the spring to eliminate one coach, and so this coach will be taking on both teams.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Konika photocopier asset tag A0067578 be accessed as the district deems necessary. The copier has reached the end of its useful life.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective November 20th, 2014, the substitute nurse rate be increased from $11.29 per hour to $14.60 per hour, and that the substitute bus driver rate be increased from $11.50 per hour to $13.23 per hour.
Second.
Discussion?
Why is that already going on? We haven't got a contract done.
A contract?
With the bus drivers.
Well, these are for substitutes, for substitute bus drivers, substitute nurses, and what the department's found is they really had trouble finding substitutes at those rates. What you're looking at is a 30% increase in both rates for the drivers and the substitute nurses. Based on the 13-14 substitute hours, it'd be an increase of roughly $3,000 to the district to be able to get people to drive the buses and be here with...
Can you tell a little bit about where it stands in relationship to other districts?
So when the request is made, the data was brought forth to say, here's what other districts are paying, and actually in Erie 2, we're right about now, middle of the pack. Before, we were pretty much on the low end or the bottom for both of those. So now it's right about in the middle.
And this has a $3,000 impact on your budget?
Correct. If it were for the full 14-15 year, if the hours stayed the same, obviously it's not the full year, we're about half a year now, so it'll be about $1,500 for this budget year.
Okay, and where are we going to find the $1,500?
That's, you guys are authorizing, we will take it out of any excesses and looking in, going into next year's budget.
You have some savings in the drivers that you just approved a few motions ago, too.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Abstain? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education cast ballots for the BOC's annual meeting to be held on April 14th, 2015, and for the component vote date to be held on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2014-15 appropriations be increased by $11,780.97 to $26,457,398.11 to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion?
I just think if you take a moment to look at all of them that are itemized, what it shows you is an extremely committed town of Eden to our school districts, and it's overwhelming when you look at the support that they give to our school districts.
What did the $5,000 from Erie Community Foundation go for?
That was for the GLP playground.
For the playground?
Right.
Oh, right, it says right here, okay. Thank you.
All right. Everyone, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Information and proposals. We go to the business report.
Mine actually is very short tonight, I'm happy to say. First of all, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, Happy Bladed Thanksgiving. I just wanted to remind everyone that given the storm and everything, and having moved this meeting, it seems things are coming up quicker. Our budget advisory team is actually already starting in December. It will begin with next month, this month, what am I saying? This month's board meeting on the 17th. So at 5:45, it will begin right here in this room. So that's just a reminder for everyone here. And second, with the veterans tax exemption, I know most everyone was able to join in and the fun in the auditorium, but just as a reminder for you guys and for everyone here, the next steps in the process are future date of December 9th for the non-binding referendum vote. That is a Tuesday. On the following Monday, the 15th, we have another forum at 5:45 that will take place in the auditorium again, and those are the next steps. Any questions?
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, mine's not short. So I'm going to try to go by the numbers that are up on the screen so no one is confused, but I do have some extras to add, just simply because we are at a later date than our original board meeting. An absolutely huge thank you for the GLP playground build, and even during the storm, you could still see it, it was still there, even though the snow was practically up to the top of that fence line. It's a thank you to the town of Eden for at the last minute coming out and helping us with the excavation, because the company that we had hired didn't have the piece of equipment that we needed to excavate, and so that was just overwhelming. It was a day or two full of excavating for that playground. The Eden Highway Department as well, Don Priceill, Tom Priceill, Mark Age, were there all day long. Parents, students, and community members for coming out on a Saturday morning, which was super, super cold and muddy. Many of you were there. I know you took some of that mud home with you, but it was a wonderful school-community event, and we can't wait to use it when all the mud is gone, and there's a little extra right now. So that was just a huge thank you. I am going to rely on Tom a little bit for this next one, which is the state of our bus fleet. Basically, what I would like to say is that last May, we went out for a bus proposition of two buses. It had been a number of years that we did not have a bus proposition on the ballot in May. Last year, we felt that the most that we could go out to the voters for was two, with an understanding that we had a fleet this year that would sustain itself through the entire year. For whatever reason, some of our older buses, and I would ask you to talk a little bit about that, their floor sills have not made it through till now. And so when DOT comes out, he comes out about every two months, we have lost a few. We anticipate that we will lose a few more. By May or June, we anticipate, I'm going to ask Tom to correct my numbers, that it's a possibility of seven to nine of our older buses that will come off of our fleet. That's pretty close to 20-25% of our fleet, which is a lot. We cannot sustain that type of loss throughout the school year. So already, you may see that we have taken some steps to borrow, and very gracious from other districts, right now we have two buses, two, right? Two buses from Lake Shore that we are using to transport our students, and Tom will lay out the plan a little bit for you as we go forward, knowing that there's still a lot of gray, okay?
Okay, thank you. What we're looking at is, we are really in a situation where we're finding ourselves looking at, what are we going to do for the remainder of the year, quite honestly? And I asked Rose to put together a report of looking at how many buses we have lost over time, how many more we are expected to lose, how many buses we now currently have in service, and how many runs we also have. So over the course, and she did not put a fit, it's one or two years, we've lost 14 buses thus far. It's a lot of buses to use. When you take a look at our fleet is, and it's with 28 runs, you're talking a good number of our buses. So 14 over the course of a period of a couple of years. She's expecting that we are to lose four more during the course of the school year. Where will this put us? It puts us at, basically, we will have 25 buses left in service. We need 28. We have 28 runs, we will have 25 buses. Obviously, doing the math, we don't have enough buses that will get us through the year without any changes whatsoever. What are our options? As Sandy mentioned, borrowing buses. Again, you can do that. It's a very short-term solution, because borrowing buses, you cannot rely on other districts for the course of the year. You're hampering their effective operations as well. We are reaching out to as many districts as possible to get us as far as possible in doing that. The next step is an emergency lease. We've already spoken to the state with an emergency lease. That step is actually a 60-day emergency lease that they would actually grant.
We'll take it.
We will take it, because when you look during the course of the year, 60 days, two months, will be a significant period from December through June. After an emergency lease, the next step after that would be a lease or a purchase. So you go from borrowing, emergency lease, a lease and/or purchase. So borrowing buses requires no action whatsoever, just the kindness of your neighboring districts. The emergency lease requires the approval by the state. The purchase of the lease, of a lease of a bus or an outright purchase of a bus would require voter approval. And again, you want to look at when you want to time things. If you want the voter approval to be in May, when you're looking at your traditional period for doing that, what is the plan that we're looking at to get us through to May? That's what Rose is looking at right now. She's put together some initial plans as to borrowing from who and from when, and has begun the process of working with the state to start the process for the emergency lease. So you guys need to be aware that it's on the horizon. We are working every day and at the plan, and fortunately, we wish we could say we know for sure what the DOT will or will not pass, not pass for the remainder of the year. The problem comes in, we have a pretty good estimate. The problem really comes in is the DOT has started to take a different look at our buses this year than in previous years. What you've had is an aging fleet, no surprise, we all know that here, but with that, several of the buses are over 10 years old. Even the ones that are under 10, we still have a lot of case where buses are rusting out. The floors themselves are rusting inside out. So what DOT did this year is started to actually take a screwdriver to some of the floors, push it through. Once it went through on one, he then started to take a look and say, wait a minute, we have a problem with one, we probably have a problem with more. And sure enough, we had a problem with more, and that created a situation that we were not aware at that point in time was that dud.
Because you couldn't see it.
You couldn't see it. So that's where we're at right now.
Questions?
Could we use the same plan, similar to what we used last year with Matthews? I mean, have we talked to him?
We've asked Matthews if they will loan us more buses. They loaned us two buses last year, I'm sure you all recall that, until we went out with the proposition. You guys may not remember that, but it was, they loaned us buses for a couple of months. It did get us through until the proposition. Once that came through, we were able to purchase the buses right there. Matthews has said, we are willing to work with you. They're in business as well. They're not in business of loaning buses where they don't make money off it as well. We're trying to work with them to see what we can do on that front. I can't guarantee where that final answer will be, but we're doing everything we can.
Are there other bus companies, then, that we could go? I mean, if we're looking at six buses, I would say, if I was Matthews, at least, yeah, let's lease them out of the bus, too. It locks you in.
I may agree with you on that assessment, they may not. And are there other companies we can look at? Sure.
And have we, or no?
Yeah. Rose is in process.
I know this is not going to be popular. I'm sorry, I know this probably won't be popular, but, I mean, given the condition of our fleet, we have a lot of aging buses, and with the possibility of replacing six next year, trying to get through this year, and then the year after, we're going to have to replace that. I mean, our fleet is old, it's not young. I mean, have we looked at, maybe looking at the company to provide bus service for us? Instead of replacing six buses every year until our fleet's rebuilt?
It has been looked at, and correct me if I'm wrong, has Rose not done presentations to the board in the past about... Yeah, she has looked at outsourcing the busing with outside contractors. She is looking at it again. So yes, so to answer that question.
I mean, it's, you know, I don't want to do it, but, I mean, given the financial situation it is, you know, with the replacement of the buses, the maintenance of the buses, you know, it might be...
We could take a look at doing an entire presentation on the buses so that, again, the board hears the positives and negatives to that, because I think it's really important to hear the positives and the negatives to that.
Oh, yeah.
So, because some of you are new and may not have heard them, so we could take a look at doing that as well.
I would also like to have a district that has had a contract for more than the first contract, because my understanding is after the first contract, when you know you don't have any buses anymore, you don't have an option, and there is not a lot of competition out there in this area especially for the companies. And I have heard very negative things from, like Pioneer, who went to a bus company after driving for many years, of how they now control their field trips, their sporting events, when you can have a sporting event, when the buses will pick you up, because they have so many districts that they do runs for, that they tell you, we can't be there until 9:30 when all our run's done. I don't care if you want to leave at 8:00 in the morning for a field trip. And if we want to make a change like we just did, house-to-house pickup, if it's not in the contract, they won't do that. Because Pioneer had a similar thing, they have a lot of students that walk, and when they've had a lot of heavy snow, the bus company says, this is the contract, this is what we live by.
Have you heard anything about that on an early go-home, like an early snow day, because there's a blizzard coming or so?
No, but I think that's something that would be addressed to me.
Because they have hills in Pioneer School District, too.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's hard to get them in early when they have out, but that would be something to be addressed, yes. But I do know that after their first contract, when they went back to negotiate, they had the claws out to the company.
Paul, did Pioneer do all of their buses?
Yes.
All of them?
They got rid of the entire, they have, actually, they have three buses that coaches and teachers are allowed to drive with students, small buses.
That they own, that the school district owns.
But they do not pick kids up in the morning, and they do not take kids home at night.
And if we had maybe two buses that were constantly on our routine, maybe we could lease one or two, just to get through this period.
Let's look at everything. I'm not saying let's do it.
There is a good possibility that the solution will be multifaceted right now. Absolutely.
Anything else on the fleet?
Okay. Let me just check my notes. Let's go to snow cleanup. I think I'm going to depend on Tom on that one, too. I think Tom and I alone logged over 2,500 texts during the four days of the storm. Huge thank you goes out to Dave Martin, who spent his entire day here on Sunday, Donny Priceill almost every day, Rose Hacketthorne, driving around, making sure that our routes were clear, and if there were bus drivers that did that as well, to thank you to them. Bob Stickney, who is our disaster coordinator for Eden to the county, who is working with us on trying to get FEMA assistance, and also for bringing out the New York City engineers who went up on the roof with our own architectural engineers, and Dave Martin on Sunday. To, I think I mentioned Mark Age and Donny Priceill, but they certainly deserve it more than once, and Young and Wright, who are architects. This, on Tuesday, did not hit the school nearly as bad as it did even a mile away at Barb Tomasula's house. She really got it down the street, but yet the district was cleared out by the end of She really got it down the street, but yet the district was cleared out by the end of the day Tuesday. What I would say though is that there were many snow removal companies from the north country, so north of Albany, who saw it coming and made their way here prior to the storm and were lying in wait for any of us who were in a position. Wednesday and Thursday, because of driving bans, we couldn't stay in front of it. And those of you who really know from your own homes, if you didn't stay in front of it, there was a problem. So by Thursday evening, when we, or Friday actually, when we were able to assess the situation, and some of it was actually registered with the police department as essential vehicles. My husband was, I don't know if he was impressed or nervous about having his license plate registered that way. But we were out here taking a look. And what we knew by Friday is that unless we could plow our district out, that we couldn't depend on getting engineers up on the roof because they wouldn't come. And so we set out to look for some snow removal companies. So Saturday morning, I was in the highway superintendent, or the highway supervisor's office, and he said, you know, I said, I'm waiting on someone from the Lake Shore District to give me a call because they had three independent companies out there. And he said, you know, I have a name of somebody who came out, they're sitting in Hamburg waiting for something to do. And so I called him right from there, and we hired him within a half hour. They had their insurance certificate with them, they came out with their entire fleet of big toys, and they were here for 14 or 15 straight hours, they worked through the nights. And Tom has some figures to share with you on that. And they were a godsend because by finishing on Saturday afternoon, Bob Stickney was able to ensure that the New York City engineers and Young &amp; Wright engineers could come out with Dave Martin on Sunday and go up on our roof, all of our roofs, and make sure that we were okay. We had a significant amount of snow on the overhangs. So having said that, thank yous, then I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, before I talk price, I just want to add a few more thank yous on the buildings and ground side. So we had Joe Boosiac, Mark Clark, Mark Age, Bob Henry, Nick Parison, Donnie Preuschel, Tommy Preuschel, Mark Stevens, just name a few on there. So it was a group effort to make sure that this is pulled off, to be able to get students back in. So that's a good side. On the dollar side, what this means is when you call in a snow plowing company to snowplow, it is not cheap, by any stretch of the imagination. That alone was just under $15,000. What I would say to all of you at the next board meeting, do not be surprised when you see a budget transfer over $10,000. That's what it's going to be for, to move the money in there if we don't have enough in that line. So I just want to at least give everyone a heads up. What we've been asked to do is put together a comprehensive total of what all of our costs are associated with the storm, and that would be put in as a beginning point with FEMA. Whether or not anything comes of that, don't know. I've never been through the FEMA process before, I know it is a lengthy process. I do know if you don't put everything in the kitchen sink in there, if there are any costs you see afterwards, then you don't get them back. So you are better to put everything rather than less. Right now, we're just over $85,000, believe it or not, all told, with everything we could possibly think of. That includes all staffing costs. We are contractually obligated with support staff to pay them for the day, whether they're here or not. Those costs are in there, the snow plowing costs, the overtime costs, the damage that we actually had to the property. So if things need to be repaired and/or replaced, so you're talking, it's a hefty bill. So looking at that, we have put in, you know, for FEMA for that, so.
I do know that with FEMA, there has to be declared a disaster area, and they have not in this area.
They have declared a disaster area. With FEMA, you have to reach a total loss of $20 million.
They're still trying to get to it, right?
They're trying to get to it right now, their estimate, what the county's estimate is around 30. But you know, they're getting it from businesses, they're getting it from everybody, just to get to that threshold so that we can get FEMA funding. So it's not, it has been declared a disaster, but you have to get to a monetary threshold for it to be actual accepted.
I don't know if it's been declared on a federal level yet. I know the state has done it, but I think to get the federal declare, we have to pass the $28 million, and then it's declared on a federal level if so desired.
It's approved on the federal level, we see $28 million.
I would say in addition to that, that our guys, if they could get in here, we're in here every single day, checking the furnace, checking everything to make sure that it was good. I'm very proud that we were here on Monday. I know that there were some districts to the north of us who got hit every day and couldn't keep on top of it that weren't. We're in a very different situation than we are. Any other questions on that?
I'd like to know a little bit about the inspection on the building, what was compromised?
We had no structural compromise at all.
Then why was there question, was it just because it was a flat roof?
Because, because we have a flat roof, because there were buildings that were going down all around us.
Yeah, okay.
And so as a precautionary measure, I made the decision that no one would enter this building until we had the roofs checked out.
And also, insurance companies said, given the amount of snow and the type of roof, they said, the weight, given what they estimated, will put you in that danger zone that you'd want to check it.
Of course, I have pictures that show the snowbank over our, it's about an eight-foot fence, you think, outside? Like around the tennis courts? And the next day, it was down to three. So Mother Nature certainly got in front of that one.
Sandy, did they remove snow off of the roof also, or no?
No, because by the time we got them up on the roof on Sunday, it had already started to warm up and was melting. And our drains from the roof go right into our, right into our clovers. They don't go into the ground, I mean, they don't go on top of the ground, so that's a really good system to have.
But our guys did remove some snow to clear our path to the clovers, without a doubt. Otherwise, we still would have had a drainage problem up there. So they did go up there and work on it?
I was expecting a flood.
During the melted, we get any water in any of the buildings?
We were expecting it in Lauren Carter's office though. From my knowledge, she had her purse on the floor and it didn't happen, so I think we're okay. Had you heard anything different?
There was minor water damage.
We had some leaks, like the first day we came back on Monday, David looked a little harried as we had pales here and there, but it really was not that significant at all.
I had heard that the GLP gym and art room.
Oh, well, the GLP gym is my fault. I learned a valuable lesson, that when there is water that is seeping through the bottom of the door, you don't open it. So.
It's a good lesson.
And so I opened it, actually, I saw the red, the orange cones go up and asked why. And they said, well, there's a little bit of water seeping up from underneath it. So I opened it to see what was happening in the back of GLP, and it was like, it was like a flood coming over your bathtub. And I shut it quickly and walked away and called Dave Martin and said, we have a problem. We did have the fire department on to suck up the water that was just sitting basically on the ground, that just didn't have any place to go. I'm really glad you brought that up. So don't open a door if in fact there's water seeping through it.
But on the good news part of that, when we were looking at the damage totals, that wasn't even included as a possible damage total because Dave said, we think the floor is okay, so.
I think I called him fast enough. Are we okay on that? Okay, so let's talk about snow days. It was last October, the first winter that I was in Eden, and I have come through a couple of determinations. If there is any type of a snowstorm, Eden will be in the middle of it. So if the storm goes up the lake, Eden gets hit, in some regard, somewhere in our district. If it goes across the lake, Eden gets hit, in some regard, one way in this district somewhere. So we had four days that we never would have thought that we needed to use in November. I called back two of those days, and I'm so grateful to the people who are understanding of why we did that, and I'll share a little bit of the background with you. We had November 26th off, which was last Wednesday. We called it back onto the calendar, and people were very gracious in changing their plans to be here. And also called back December 10th. December 10th was a full staff development day, with a full day of parent-teacher conferences slated for GLP in the elementary school. We have had an opportunity to get together as an administrative staff and as a teaching staff, and have now moved those parent-teacher conferences to January 30th, beginning at 10:15 and on through the day. And I know that elementary school and GLP will work with the parents to make that the best that they can for them. If in fact, we do not use any snow days, no, I'm going to change that. If we use between zero and two snow days, between now and January 30th, we do not need to change anything in our school calendar at all. We have two, we don't have to change a thing. If we get to three snow days by January 30th, then that January 30th date will be a morning attendance until 10:15 only for K6, not for 712. So again, that would be the only change. If we get to four snow days, but I got to go somewhere else because I ran out of room. If we get to four snow days by April 30th, we don't have anything to give up in between January and April 30th, then we will use a half a day at K6, and we will take a half a day at 712. We are not able to take another half day in for semester because SED regs say you can only have four half days. And that's the reason why December 10th went away, because it would, I couldn't make it a student attendance day and a half day as well. It was either a full day or nothing. If we get to five snow days, yes. I have got some internal options I can play with, with what's called a superintendent conference day, which won't change anything on the calendar, it'll just be an internal recording. If we get to six snow days, then we will use May 22nd. And if we get to seven, I'm going to come ask you. No, actually, if we get to seven days, we would be looking at either the February, April breaks. So we can play with six. Where it affects us the most is in our professional development. And it's sad, but that is exactly what is the case, we take from our teacher's time. All right, did I catch that all? Backing up and not on the agenda, I would like to say something about also during that storm. So I'm not going to say publicly that this person drove through driving bans, but Hannah May was able to travel to Ithaca for the New York State 2014 diving finals. She entered in the 56 seed out of 58, and she earned her best score for five dives, and she finished 31st in New York State. So we're really, really proud of her. She did a fabulous job in a really difficult situation, and I know her mom drove her and diving coach one as well, so we congratulate her. Anything else on that, Marissa, that I missed? No, it's good? All right, good job. Capital project. So what should have come to you at the last board meeting was our next step in the capital project. So we're a little bit behind, but we're still really, still on track. What will be coming out in the next couple of days is a letter to approximately, Ms. Tomasula, do you think it's about 80, 90 people?
Sure.
Yeah, about 80 or 90 school and community people to be a part of a committee, to help us decide what our next five, 10, 15 years in Eden will be with the capital project and what we should look like. We are looking at a December 2015 referendum. In order to do that, we have a January 7th kickoff date planned for two of three committees. And one of those committees is now called academic organization. The academic organization basically is asking a committee to make some decisions about two overriding factors. One is, what about GLP? Because what has been happening is we have not addressed the issues at GLP in a really long time, and so therefore, they get further and further and further behind as we go along. It's like your home, if you don't do something to your home because you think you're going to sell it, you're going to move out, then all of a sudden, you find that you're not, you're not being competitive in resale. Well, we're not being competitive in instruction at GLP. So the committee charges, what do we do with GLP? Again, the choice is to sell or lease the building as a whole, keep it as a primary school only, or keep it as a primary school, partition off a wing for central offices, perhaps a wraparound pre-K so our students that are four can ride the bus back and forth in any other office space. GLP is the only building that can be partitioned off because it's basically built with wings. Every other building can't. The other decision which will be made by this academic organization committee is, should we create a middle school, which is grade six through eight, and reconfigure the junior, senior high school building into a middle school and a high school? Not a school within a school, but two schools here. And what does that look like? And what do we need to consider on those two areas and why? The second committee is called the Athletic Physical Education and Site Utilization Committee, also with the same kickoff date, which is Wednesday, January 7th. The questions for this one will be, based on these decisions of what came up with GLP for the Eden Central School District, if in fact GLP decision is to sell or lease it, then how do we make up for the loss of the gymnasium and the fields? A second one would be, is if we create a middle school, do we have enough PE space for sixth grade at the junior, senior, or the new middle school and high school? What other updates or changes do need to take place within PE spaces or athletics? Should we look at building a fitness center, which is a school and community use, so we can drive some revenue? And the next one, which has been going on for as long as I've been here, really is taking a look at a turf field for multiple sports, possibly a field house, handicap accessible, lights, toilet rooms, and a snack shack. The third committee, which will not start until sometime in February, is called the Infrastructure, Technology, and Building Conditions Committee. This one basically deals with everything else, using what was decided or recommended by the other two committees. What health, safety, and security measures do we need to consider in all academic buildings? For example, when you walk in the front door of the elementary school, you can go directly upstairs. When you walk in what is considered the main entrance here, there's really nothing there. Some people try to come in through the front door, but that's not really our front entrance here. What technology needs do we have in each of the buildings from an instructional, integration, or infrastructure? What items on our building conditions survey need immediate attention? So that health and safety again. And then what other items do we need to consider? For example, in our auditoriums, moisture in our auditoriums, air quality in our tech or our art rooms. So these letters will be going out in the next couple of days. All of you have either agreed or have been, or will be asked if you would be kind enough to be on certain committees. And so I just wanted you to be aware of the next steps. Our goal, honestly, is to have most of it wrapped up by July, August, when everyone goes on vacation, and be able to bring out a referendum in the amount of time that we can by December. You might ask, why do I pick December? I'd like to, and we've brought this up in other board meetings. By the time you get into January and February, honestly, it's a really hard time to do a referendum in January and February. October and November, you're really just starting out in the school year. So a good place would be, would be December. If we don't make it, we can always move to January or February. The last big capital project that we had here was in 2005, which is a great deal of time ago. Tom, you can correct me publicly if I'm wrong, but the longer you go without a capital project, doesn't your credit kind of go down?
Well, part of capital projects is showing that you effectively can manage debt, so.
Like your credit card?
Correct, so that is correct. And then our building aid isn't in a steady flow either, so those are the two parts of that.
I've brought up in another meeting and also in your board notes, a tentative agreement with Brian Mata, which is an orthopedic surgeon out of Lake Shore, or his physician's assistant as a volunteer service at all of our home games. I will be bringing that to the board for a vote, possibly at the December 17th or the January board meeting. I was asked basically by Patty Kraus and perhaps another board member to take a look at our current lunch program and the quality of the lunch program. I did meet with my seven-through-nine superintendent advisory council and also the 10-through-12 superintendent advisory council. Pat Mancana was able to then get together again with the 10-through-12 to create a survey. She'll meet with them again this week, and she'll bring that to the seven-through-nine. It's interesting to know that what, sometimes, and you're certainly welcome to speak on this if you eat lunches here, sometimes what we look at and say, what is that, is your favorite lunches. And so we just want to do what's best for kids, and so we're really reaching out. Anything that you want to say on the lunches? Feel free.
I definitely did.
They're different this year.
Different in what way?
Worse.
Worse, yeah. Define worse.
Like the whole, like, healthy thing, obviously, you're not going to get, like, high school kids to like, like, the, like, new cookies that are supposed to.
Made of whole wheat?
Yeah, like, you're not going to get high school kids to like that stuff. I don't know, that's just what I heard.
Okay. And they got smaller. The prices went up and the food got smaller, and it's made of whole wheat, yeah.
That happened in.
I heard the kids complain about the quantity.
I used to love school lunch, too.
Oh, yeah.
We know, we know. I know. But we still want them to be able to eat. Right, right. Okay. Thank you. So I'll come back with another update for you. I will be also bringing to the board, possibly at the December 17th meeting, a recommendation for another shared agreement with North Collins for our football team. We did meet with them just before the storm, we were pleased with how it went, hoping that we'll have a few more students that go out. And so that is something that the board has to approve before we can move forward.
Would we look at any other sharing at that time, or?
It has not come up in our conversation for December yet. Yeah, there's some really intriguing guidelines. I can certainly ask Marissa to come to you in December and share some of those guidelines with you about what you can and cannot do with sharing. I know that in our conversations, what, if you cannot cut one of your own players to take a student from another team, so unless the team is super small, it can't be done. So I can certainly look into that for you.
You know, like the girl soccer team, you have to, you know, touch back on.
Would you like me to do that for December?
Yeah, I'd hate to see programs canceled and, you know, moved up to varsity where they won't get a lot of playing time.
they won't get a lot of playing time. If we can get students from, you know, North Collins, I don't know, I just...
They have a really good soccer program.
If there's an opportunity, so.
Not a problem. I'll see if I can get that on the December meeting for you. Okay. The PTEC grant, you may have read about that in my notes, the PTEC grant is the most amazing initiative to be enacted in New York State. Basically, what it is, is it's a number of school districts who signed on, we did, we got the grant from New York State, and basically what it does is it asks us to identify students in seventh grade that will go on for an associate's degree at no cost. So they will earn their high school diploma and their associate degree in something technology-related, and I know Paul knows an awful lot about this, yes.
I know some about it.
Yes. We would do two, that would be my recommendation, because kids that young really need the support of someone else, and so we would do two students. It's maybe a little difficult, maybe not, to identify a seventh grader and predict what will happen in the next six to eight years, but we're really excited to be a part of it. Is there anything that you would like to add that I missed?
No.
Okay. It's happening already.
Yeah, it's very exciting that we were accepted into the program.
Yes, it is. It was one of those things where they came and put the paper in front of us and said, "You want in?", and I'm like, "Of course you want in." It is happening already on the East Coast, if you look at your NISBA clips, you'll see some of the articles about PTEC happening out near Long Island. I would say again to anyone in the audience and to the board who have children, to get ready for the possibility of a two-hour delay, in case we have one of those quick storms that comes through and it's gone by 8:00 or 8:30. We had one of those last year, we were ready to start a two-hour delay, and then we had two of our buses that wouldn't start, so we didn't, we didn't do it. But it, it'll be the first time that Eden has ever done it in the history, but it is a way for us to gain an attendance day by just starting two hours late. So the message would be, whatever time your bus normally would come, we'll come exactly two hours late. We have had a request from a parent to put up on our website what pickup times are when we have a half a day, and I could absolutely understand what that means, so that'll be going up on our website as well. I don't think I missed anything. I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
The teachers?
That's me. The teacher center has to, or has on their board a school board member, and I was approached to sit on the Eden Teacher Center as that board member, and I accepted that position.
Oh, thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. Is there anything that you would like to add about what you've been hearing about the Career and Tech alternate pathway so far, from your end?
Well, basically, what I've heard so far is that it's going to replace, possibly, well, it is going to replace one of the region's exams, and it looks like it's going to replace the social studies, region's exam?
It could.
It could. Well, it will take the place of one of the region's exams, and the one that's being looked at is the social studies, so the students will be able to go to Career and Tech and take the NOCTI or the equivalent exam, and that will count as one of their region's exams.
So it's called a four-plus-one. If it goes through, it's up for public comment until the end of January, I think January 28th. I know that Bosse's, where you work, has been doing an awful lot of studying into it, because some of the courses in Bosse's already have exams that are approved by the state and some are not. The other piece to that, which is a little different, is that what is currently a two, is a global one and global two regions exam, covering two years, will change to a one year at the end of the second year, that's what, what you were stating, but it doesn't necessarily have to be social studies. There may be some changes to this, Kelly will come and talk to us possibly in January when it goes public. We've already seen some changes already, so we're kind of hesitant to say anything, but it is up for public comment right now through the Board of Regents.
Can Paul explain the teacher center a little bit? Can you talk about that a little bit, the teacher center?
The teacher center is in the GLP, and it is available for teachers to go in, and they also hold training there, teachers can make materials for their classroom there at no cost to the teachers, and I was approached, because they knew I was a board member, to sit on their board.
It's not just teachers from Eden, correct?
No, the board is made up of teachers from all districts.
No, I'm saying, teachers can use that teacher center.
Oh, all of the teachers in this area can use it, yes, it's open, and they actually are tenant to us, right?
We're just really, we're really fortunate to have it here.
Right, they're the tenant, so they pay rent to us.
Marissa just figured it out, didn't you? She's, if you take a look down the walls of going down the athletic wing, all of that up there is Marissa's new find, she thinks it's the greatest thing.
At no cost, right?
Marissa, did it cost you anything?
No.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I would like to also congratulate the Eden Girls Volleyball, once again, for winning the state champions, and special thanks to the East Eden Fire Department and the Eden Police Department for helping us out that night.
Yeah, absolutely.
And how many consecutive years? I couldn't remember.
Oh, wait, Marissa, I'm gonna depend on you, was it six consecutive years?
No, it's six or seven.
Six consecutive years that they won, it's...
Twelve?
Six consecutive years that they've gone.
Gone, in 16, 16?
Overall, that they've gone, well, that they've won. Overall, that they've gone.
In six consecutive?
Six consecutive.
Yeah, yeah. You went, you went, she was, she was, she was streaming us, like, every couple minutes.
Yeah, those were, I mean, there's a record in New York State, they can hold the most, I don't, they grow five of state championships.
And one of the girls was saying she might, by the time she graduates, have 10?
Oh, because of the, because of softball, and...
Yeah, because of softball, because two of our girls currently, they won softball states last year, and they won volleyball states for, it could be up to, they're at five, so they've got six medals right now. She's only a sophomore, and we're hoping to go back for softball and volleyball. They have six, one.
Wow.
More bonfires.
Wow. That's a lot of bonfires, Mike just said.
I'm running out of wood.
That's right. We've started a new tradition at Eden.
Start burning some of the buses.
Yeah. Okay, future dates, we have the Veterans Tax Exemption, non-binding referendum vote, Tuesday, December 9th, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, here in the foyer. We have another Veterans Tax Exemption hearing on Monday, December 15th, that's at 5:45 in the auditorium. And then the next regular board meeting is Wednesday, December 17th, 7:00 PM, same place, right here. And I move that the Board of Education anticipates entering executive session to discuss a matter identifying a disabled student, which is made confidential by federal law, the supervisory staff organization contract, and the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
I would like to actually also add superintendent's contract to that, so, resecond it.
Second.
All in favor?